Make a motion to excuse Dr. Curlin and Kimball. You're right. I don't.
No, I don't want to.
Yeah, that's what we're...
I don't know, I mean, you know.
That's what, yeah, she's filming for I- eighty-five.
It's on the consent agenda.
Because we're passing a resolution, I...
But it's on the consent agenda.
We're not...
Y'all ready?
Unless you want to do it, Paul.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Octo- October first meeting of the Gastonia City Council on the first day of October two thousand thirteen. Welcome everyone, and we're certainly glad you're here. It's almost too pretty to be inside. The weather's just getting just about right now, but I would like to, at this time, item A, of course, is our prayer. I'd like for us, before the prayer, to, I'd like to mention the, to be thinking about the family of Mr. Larry Carpenter, and who, of course, most of us probably knew, and his family. He had a long, long fight, and he's a wonderful person and a wonderful mentor to a lot of people, a coach and a athletic director, and on and on and on, but I'd like for us to remember, I think his service was the day before yesterday, so forty-seven years old, but he meant a lot to this community. Pray with me, if you will, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for this wonderful city. We thank you for all the people that are in it. We ask that you be with all of us and the families of all of the people that are here tonight. Christ's name, amen. Now, the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. One little housekeeping item I've been asked to mention.
Yes, Mayor, if I could, I'd like to make a motion that we excuse Councilman Kimball and also Councilman Curlin, as they are away on other business.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, Jenny, there's one. All right, the other one, the other housekeeping item, it's, they've asked us to, if the machine does not pick up when we talk, and we're not, whether it's here or whether it's at the courthouse, and the recording machine does not pick up. I'm as guilty as, and all of y'all are, but we forget to, and I hear it right now, being, especially over courthouse. Ours is much better than the county's, of course. But just, I wanted to mention that, if I could, I'd like to have a motion under item C, is adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second? Discussion, all in favor? Okay, item D's approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of September third, two thousand thirteen. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, item E is Awards Ceremonies and Promotions Committee. First one, I'll go ahead and tell you both of them as he goes down. Councilman Jim Gallagher is the chairman. The first one's the Proclamation of Public Power Week, October sixth through twelfth, two thousand thirteen, and the second one's the Proclamation of Fire Prevention Week, October, the same time, two thousand thirteen. You got your, you got your tennis shoes on, you're ready to go, so go for it.
I'd like to run. I'd like to ask the Director of Electric to come on up, Paul Jakubzak. The proclamation from Gastonia reads as follows. Whereas we, the citizens of the city of Gastonia, place high value on the local control over community services, and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned, locally-controlled, not-for-profit electric utility, and as consumers and owners of our electric utility have a direct say in the utility's operations and policies. And whereas the city of Gastonia provides our homes, businesses, farms, social services, local government service agencies with reliable, efficient, and cost-effective electricity, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at a not-for-profit rates. And whereas the city of Gastonia is a valuable community, has a valuable community assets that contribute substantially to the well-being of our local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, environmental protection, economic development, and safety awareness. And whereas the city of Gastonia is dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operations provide many consumer protection and continues to make our community a better place in which to live and work, as well as contributes to protecting the global environment. Where, now, therefore, be resolved that the city of Gastonia will continue to work to bring lower-cost, safety, reliable electricity to community homes and businesses, just as it has since eighteen ninety-nine, the year when the utility was created to serve the citizens of Gastonia. That's two hundred and fourteen years ago. The other thing is, Paul, your guys went up this past year and helped out with Hurricane Sandy, and just really, it's nice to know that you went up there to Long Island and helped out the communities up there, restore their power. It was really nice. See, be it further resolved, the week of October sixth to the twelfth, two thousand thirteen, be designated as the twenty-seventh Annual Pow- Public Power Week, in order to honor the city of Gastonia for its contributions to the community, and to make consumers, owners, policymakers, and employees more aware of contributions to their well-being and how it makes their lives powerful. And be further resolved that the community joins hands with more than two thousand other public power systems in the United States in the celebration of public power and recognition that the city of Gastonia is good for consumers, business, and community, and the nation. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand to cause the official seal of the city of Gastonia to be affixed this first day of October in the year of our Lord, two thousand thirteen. And Paul, this proclamation's to you and to your whole staff. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I will accept this on behalf of the forty-six employees that keep the lights on in the city of Gastonia, go out in all kinds of weather, make sure that your lights are on. With that, I'd also like to invite you, as well as the community, to our Energy Day, which is at the SHIELD, this coming Saturday, the fifth, from eleven a.m. till two p.m. This is the third time that we've had this. We'll have the guys out there, they'll be climbing, having some of the trucks out there, as well as a new safety town demonstration, talking about safety and safety around power lines. And with that, what I'd also like to do is introduce Ms. Kristy Crisp, who has a little bit of news to share with you guys.
Good evening. This was perfect timing with Public Power Week. The end of last week, we actually received news, each year, Electric Cities honors selected members, selected municipalities within its membership with their ex- Region of Excellence awards. And last week, they announced the two thousand thirteen Public Power Award of Excellence winners, and we are very proud to announce that Gastonia won all five awards, being competitive business environment, energy efficiency, financial stability, legislative involvement, and service excellence. And that includes seventy of both municipalities and participating agencies in Electric Cities. There are only eleven municipalities that receive all five awards, so we're very pleased to receive these, and we have our awards, they will be displayed down in the municipal operations center.
Great. Thank you both very much.
Now, I'd like to ask Fire Chief Phil Welsh to come on up. Another proclamation for the Fire Department. Where the city of Gastonia is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our city, and whereas the fire is seriously, a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are in the location where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas nearly three thousand people die each year as a result of home fires, and whereas unattended cooking appliances are the leading cause of home structure fires and associated injuries, and the third leading cause of home fire deaths, and whereas two-thirds of the home cooking fires started with ignition of food or other cooking materials, and I could attest that, I'm a horrible cooker, and I said a lot of things on fire. Whereas working smoke alarms, which are tough to shut off sometimes, cut the risk of dying and report home fires in half, and whereas the National Fire Protection Association recommends at least one smoke alarm on every level of the home, including the basement, outside, all sleeping areas, and in bedrooms, and whereas the automatic fire sprinkler systems cut the risk of dying in a home fire by eight percent. That's drastic. And whereas the city of Gastonia's fire responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through the prevention and proper education, and whereas Gastonia residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the residents who have planned and participated a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. That is key, having a way out and teaching your children, most importantly, a way out in case something does happen, and in teaching children that if they feel the doorknob of their bedroom and it's hot, do not open that door, because the fire could come right in if that happens. Those are things that the Fire Department goes around into different schools and explains to the children. Whereas in two thousand thirteen, Fire Prevention Week prevents kitchen fires, get cooking with fire safety, effectively serves to remind us of the dangers associated with cooking fires, and to develop and practice home fire escape plans during the Fire Prevention Week and year-round. Now, therefore, the mayor and the council of the city of Gastonia do hereby proclaim October sixth through the twelfth, two thousand thirteen, as Fire Prevention Week in the city of Gastonia, and urges all citizens to protect their homes and families, heeding the important message of Fire Prevention Week, two thousand thirteen, and to support many public safety activities and efforts of North Carolina's fire and emergency services. In witness herof, I here to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Gastonia to be affixed this day, October first, in the year of our Lord, two thousand thirteen. John Bridgman, Mayor of Gastonia. And on behalf of the city council, I'd like to give this to you, Fire Chief Welsh, thank you for all that you do, and if you could explain to us how Fire Prevention Week came about, that would really help.
Okay, we spoke briefly, right from where it started, and Fire Prevention Week was established to memorialize the Great Chicago Fire, and it was in eighteen seventy-seven, I believe, or seventy-two, actually, I think it was. So Fire Prevention Week's been around about ninety years now. You all recognize, in the past decade, Fire Marshal Floyd stood here to receive this award. He retired last month, and we're moving right on. We'll be back in all the schools again this month with our department, and we're proud to serve you on behalf of the hundred and forty firefighters of the city of Gastonia. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We can do them together. Okay, discussion, all in favor? Unanimous. Chief, stay close, our city manager just fell off this side of the wall. He's been on vacation, I don't know, but you need to stick around. The next presentation, under item F, is the first one, that we have two. The first one's Ms. Hannah, are you ready? Curlin. Gaston County J.C.'s Reference Request for In-Kind Services Gastonia Christmas Parade, December the eighth, two thousand thirteen. And she brought her lawyer with her.
So Ben Iipac and I are co-chairing the Gastonia City Parade this year. So the annual Gastonia Christmas Parade has been a highly anticipated tradition around the holiday season in the past. We've had over a hundred entries in this parade, and we're asking that it be Sunday, December the eighth, which is a little bit different than years past, just because it's typically the first Sunday, but that's too close to Thanksgiving holiday. And so, just like normal, we're going to close down Franklin with your approval, starting at the intersection of South Trenton, all the way down to South Belvedere. And we're requesting for in-kind services, your city police, your traffic engineer. We're also asking just for a notification of your Fire Department and emergency medical staff, just to let them know what's happening that day. We're also asking that the Gastonia City, the Parks and Rec, they're going to help us out with donating a gator for our use that day, and then, of course, the trash cleanup and street cleaning afterwards, which would be a huge help.
Also having access to city halls, you should have an electrical outlet for our junky spaceship right on front here.
There ain't any... She's going to...
You guys want a map?
We know that, I know that. What is this, is this a local, J.C.'s, what is that? Is that a... There is a motion in a second, and Dr. Curlin has volunteered to clean up the streets when you're... But that's in the motion. Any other discussion? Yes?
I would just like to thank the J.C.'s for taking this project on year after year after year. Y'all do a fantastic job with it. Our citizens and the children that come, it's amazing to see all those smiling faces. So, you know, I appreciate your involvement in the city and continuing this project.
Okay, yes, sir. Easy. I've done that, too. Okay, there is a motion in a second, all in favor, please. It is unanimous. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Oh, one thing.
Uh-huh.
I'd like to ask the chief something. How many people do you normally estimate observe that it's a Christmas parade?
I don't even know how to come up with that estimation. It gets packed from one inch...
Would you say it's more than twenty-five hundred?
I saw that, too.
How many thousand? Ten, twenty thousand?
You're right, you're right. More than twenty-five hundred. Okay, that's in one box, twenty-five hundred. That's right. Okay, the next one's Mr. Gerald Tate, a request for in-kind services Gaston County Toys for Tots Motorcycle Ride, November twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen. Mr. Tate? I have to look at it and see. I got new glasses tomorrow.
I'll try, I'll try them on.
Help him, Mike.
All right, sir. The mayor and councilman, I'd like to say hello to you. Gerald Tate, thirteenth North Pride Street here in Gastonia. I'm the chairman of Gastonia Toys for Tots Motorcycle Ride. This is our twenty-seventh year doing this in Gastonia, and I've been the chairman the whole twenty-seven, because I can't get none of the other guys to take it. But there's none, none, none. But nevertheless, again, we try to assist, our main objective is to try to assist the parents of Gaston County, who just maybe can't afford it and have a little struggle, to get these kids some Christmas presents, put smiles on their faces. We've managed to, I would estimate about six thousand families over the time or more. And this, this run has been very successful. It was the first one south of the Catawba River Bridge. At the time it was started, it was the second one in the state of North Carolina, and now as you know, they're everywhere. So, again, I come to you requesting in-kind services, and I tell you, in the past, we've managed with the city police and the Fire Department, EMT workers and everything, we've managed to put on a great show, managed to do real well and keep this thing safe. We have a few streets that we cover. I designed this thing myself, sat down and meeting to go over it, and we try to keep it where it doesn't, it doesn't have a lot, it won't create a lot of problems with the traffic flow. Being on Sunday at this time, the traffic flow is limited anyway, so this helps us very much with what we're doing. We end up at East Ridge Mall, and at the mall, we feed everybody, and we try to let everybody fellowship, have a good fellowship, and that's where we end. And it starts at Urban Community Center. As you see, this year is November the twenty-fourth. Urban Community Center is nine thirteen North Pride Street, and it's self-explanatory, like I said, it's at the ends of East Ridge Mall, there's a map on the back showing maybe four different areas to get to it. And I'd just like to say thank you very much for your help with this, as every year, every year in the past, you all are inviting. So, if you get a chance, please come out in that right, Mr. Mack, there.
Gentlemen, charge your aim.
Exactly.
Any questions to Mr. Tate? Yes, sir.
Mr. Tate?
Yes, sir.
Where would people drop off toys for you?
East Ridge Mall is the ending point, and this is where we have the Salvation, we work in conjunction with Salvation Army and Gaston County Social Services. At the ending point is where we have Salvation Army set up with the van to support the amount of toys.
So they bring the toys there?
Bring the toys there, that would be sufficient. Now, you can also call anybody on this list, the numbers are there. You call anybody on this list, and we'll come pick them up.
Excellent, okay.
Any other questions? A motion? Is there a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, did you not get that map?
I saw it, but...
Okay, okay, what we'll do, what we'll do is, okay, if it's raining, we come out Shannon Bradley Road, seventy-four, that's the junkyard, that's where the police pick us up, straight down Franklin to the mall. On a dry day, they'll pick us up at Edgewood, up at the food, okay? We'll either be coming down Edgewood, or we'll come out up near Shadewood, right near eighty-five, and come down, we'll be escorted by the county until we get to the city limits, then they will pick us up.
So you will be coming right down from the city hall?
Straight down.
That's really impressive sight, and the sound of the motorcycle is really impressive. I love watching it.
You get several years with it.
Okay, thank you very much, or we voted, and it's unanimous, so thank you.
Thank you.
It'll be twenty-eighth year. Thank you. I was hoping, that's where you were going. Next item is item G, public expression. Is there some? Okay. Next, under the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
I would like...
Discussion.
Yes, yes. I would like to pull item number seven...
Yes.
For discussion only.
Okay. Well, I would...
Do we need to pull it, or can we just discuss it?
What about Melissa?
I think if you're going to discuss it, you would need to pull it.
You did? Okay.
What if we're just going to read it?
You second?
If you're just going to read it, then you wouldn't have, it's a resolution, if you were just going to read the resolution, then you would not need to pull it, but if you're going to discuss it, have a discussion on the resolution, I think you probably
Would it satisfy Councilwoman Craig just to read it during discussion and not...
Then you don't, then go ahead, would you read it, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
Exhibit seven, I'll start for you. Resolution endorsing the widening of I- eighty-five from the Belmont, two seventy-three, exit twenty-seven, exit to the, to the US twenty-nine seventy-four interchange, which is exit ten B, and adding additional lane to the northbound off-ramp to Cox Road, which is exit twenty-one. And this is the resolution, so if you'd read it, please.
Sure, Mayor. Whereas Gastonia is recognized as one of the best places to live and work in the metro line of region with an ideal combination of location, size, and quality of life, and whereas the city of Gastonia's strategic location just minutes west of Charlotte, in midway between Atlanta and North Carolina's research triangle, attracts both industry and new residents, and whereas socio-economic trends, congestion, and projected growth in Gastonia, Gaston County, and the Charlotte Concord Gastonia, North Carolina, South Carolina, metropolitan statistical area, or MSA, will continue to increase demands for accessibility and connectivity between the two counties. And whereas, an objective of the city of Gastonia is to promote future opportunities for interregional mobility with enhancements to the roadwork and to move vehicles in a more efficient manner. And whereas, in two thousand and five, Gaston County was designated as an eight-hour ozone non-attainment area, where this project will improve air quality, modeling, and emission conditions for the metropolitan region. And whereas, the city of Gastonia recognizes that congestion on I- eighty-five from the North Carolina two seventy-three, which is exit twenty-seven, to US twenty-nine seventy-four, which is exit ten B, creates lost economic opportunities, wastes fuel, contributes to our ongoing air quality problems, and negatively impacts the health of our population. And whereas, the northbound off-ramp to Cox Road adds to the congestion and safety concerns by traffic backing up onto I- eighty-five or exit twenty-one. And so, now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Gastonia hereby endorses the expansion of I- eighty-five from North Carolina two seventy-three, which is exit twenty-seven, to the US twenty-nine seventy-four interchange, which is exit ten B, and adding an additional lane to the northbound off-ramp to Cox Road, which is exit twenty-one, and it's signed by our mayor, John D. Bridgman, on October first of two thousand thirteen.
Okay, sure.
This is only for the southbound of eighty-five, correct? Adding the lane?
The widening would be for both north and south, but the ramp, on that ramp, it's just that one ramp.
Thank you, Ed, for that clarification.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second on the consent agenda, and we've had our discussion, all in favor of that consent agenda. It's unanimous, Jenny. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, folks. Moving to the regular agenda. Item nine is the North Carolina Department of Transportation Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Agreement for Design and Construction of the Limeburger slash Downtown Pedestrian Connector Budget Amendment fiscal year fourteen, zero one three, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Presentation by Mr. Rusty Boss, the city engineer. Rusty.
Good evening, Mayor.
Item nine.
One of the sidewalk projects that was approved in the GeoBond referendum was the downtown Limeburger Park Connector. The intent of this project was to connect a pedestrian connection between the two areas, mainly looking for improvements to the sidewalk network, filling in missing gaps, replacement of some badly broken sections, improvements at intersection crossings, and making the entire route a little more ADA accessible, fixing ADA wheelchair ramps and such. Staff has evaluated that area. We've determined that the best route, the preferred route right now for that, those improvements, is up Chestnut Street. It's sort of a residential neighborhood to the north. And then getting on Second Avenue and going west in area, that seems to be the route that gets us closest in and the safest route that we've been able to determine. During that evaluation, it came to staff's attention that the intent of the work, the work that's being done fits the intent of North Carolina DOT's Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Program. This is a federally funded program administered by DOT with the goal of reducing pollutants by removing vehicles from the street. Essentially, the thought is that if we make these improvements, folks will walk from Limeburger Park to downtown as opposed to drive, that's kind of justification for the project. During the, so staff in the city of Gastonia submitted an application. The estimate for the project was three hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. It's an eighty-twenty split, the city of Gastonia's portion of that comes up to sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And that essentially leverages an additional two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to C-MAC funding, money to go towards those sidewalk improvements, wheelchair ramps, putting some pavements, ripings down. At the same time that we were going into this, we also heard very clearly from council that there were other sidewalk needs, especially on Modena Street. We've been looking at that project as well and identified some possible funding in Modena for that. We've actually had a chance to meet with the head of the community watch organization out there and gotten some feedback from them on where we would want to start putting sidewalk in on Modena Street. They concur with staff that probably the way to do this is start at the Long Avenue side and start working our way north. I think that catches most of the bus stops and addresses most of the needs that we're hearing from the community there. So, we're kind of parallel tracking that project along with the C-MAC agreement for the downtown Limeburger Connector. So, with all that said, staff recommends the council approve this agreement and the accounting budget amendment. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. I'll have Jason Thompson in the audience here with the planning department too.
Any questions, Lee, Jim?
I'd like to compliment the engineering staff-
Yes, sir.
For going after that grant and leveraging that small amount of money to get the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Thank you so much for doing this, sir.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Gallagher.
Rusty, the grant that we're gonna, we can get, we cannot use that up in the Modena area?
The grants are awarded on a project-specific basis. So, this grant was awarded specifically to the downtown Limeburger. That was the project that was on the GeoBond list that we were working on. And so that was where our focus was at the time. I'm certain we can get with our MPO and get an application, depending on the timing, I guess, and see where it scores for the Modena grant. I think with the bus routes on it, it probably does score pretty good, but we can certainly chase that also.
Because it just seems like, you know, they have sidewalks down here already, they don't have any up there. And it just seems more logical in that respect. The other thing is, with Modena, have we done anything with the bus stop up there, putting up a shelter for them?
Not to date, that's where we haven't. We've made some improvements to grading, we've done some shoulder work, but I don't think we've done anything yet as far as putting a shelter on the bus stop. I can't speak for transit, I'm not even sure if we have a shelter at stock right now, what we should give them.
Yeah, because I know they've been asking for one for about a year.
I think that's definitely on the scope of the work that we ultimately want to complete with Modena. It definitely includes sidewalks, bus shelters, that whole area.
We'll give the council a report on that. Every year we budget, at least two or three, we keep adding to the system. And I'm not sure right now whether the Modena is scheduled for this year, but it may be. But we'll give a report to the council, let you know.
The other thing is, didn't we have some money from a builder that was up in the Modena area-
Yes, sir.
That would allow for paving of sidewalks or so? Where do we stand with that?
Yes, sir. The last report that I got was that, it was with Sundance Village. And to date, we have twenty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars in that account. That would go towards that sidewalk in that area. As well as, there's a couple other little pots of money that we're trying to sort, see if we can pull something together.
Thank you.
Ms. Craig.
Rusty, I know we're trying to identify where we can come up with the money for Modena. What kind of a timeframe are we looking at? I mean, I know I've just heard what the city manager did say, that it could be in this year's budget, but we're not sure. If it's not in this year's budget, are we trying to find money in other areas to where we can apply that to this fifty to seventy-five thousand for Modena?
I think right now, we're looking anywhere and everywhere we can. The first place we go to is our capital improvement budget.
Right.
And that has accounts that do have pools of money that can go towards that project. That's the first place we look. After that, we'll see what else is available on it. Right now, it's just deep push, community and follow.
My reference was to the transit, the bus shelter-
Oh, okay.
For next year. Now, with regard to the sidewalk, we, the staff met the engineering and planning and we identified where we should, we have a connection that's right up there by I-85, connects you all the way into Bradley Center. Then we have a missing piece going down to Harrison. Harrison is where the bus stop is. And then from Harrison going back to where the, where it stops around Park, I think. And at, just, it goes from Ozark going northward. So, what we're gonna do, and we talked to Ms. Stroop about, you know, what's more important, what direction we should go. And I think the consensus is, is to move from where the sidewalk ends, coming off of Long or Ozark, going north. We're gonna run that and try to get that all the way to Harrison, get that to the bus stop. And then that's a good logical place for this first phase. But we may actually, it may be multiple phases, because you gotta cross the railroad. So, you know, crossing a railroad with a pedestrian piece, there's a lot of little things that have to move with it. So, that's almost a little project in itself. But it's still, that railroad is still owned by the state, so that'll make that a little bit easier. So, we're, but what we're gonna, our intention is, keep moving that thing and we'll be actually being able to get to that right away.
Well, I guess the reasoning behind the question that I'm asking is, is that it's my understanding that Modena's been waiting a long time. And so, I just feel like that personally, I don't, I don't want to see it drop off of the radar screen. I think that they have waited and they would like to have as quick a response as possible. So, and I understand that we gotta do the engineering stuff and all that. But if we can put some kind of a timeframe on it, then that gives us an opportunity to get what we need to get done. But it also gives them some confidence that we're gonna do this within a timely manner. So, that's the reason for the question, is that if we could get some kind of a timeline on that, that would be great.
I think we made some progress at that last meeting, Rusty. And we should be able to give you some kind of a timeline, particularly going up to Harrison. Then the next, there's another phase, because see, it used to be that we didn't have any sidewalk on Modena at all. We have built sidewalk on either side of the interstate, and we have that middle piece. But we're gonna try to get all the way to Bradley Center ultimately. But we're gonna try to tackle the first step, which would connect Long Avenue to the bus stop there at Harrison. And I, you know, we will try to get you a realistic schedule-
Right.
Because we gotta make sure we have the right of way, we gotta make sure that, we gotta cross that railroad, you know, a few little things.
Yeah, and I understand that, I really do. So, if we could get some kind of a timeline, as soon as y'all could get one put together, that would be great.
Yes, sir.
And Rusty and Ed, cost is always the other factor. So, if you could find out what the cost is, or we could break it down and do it in segments, and somehow that would help out as well.
That was actually one of the things that we did in that meeting. We kind of had some aspects that we broke out, tried to put it in bite-sized pieces. So, we could start making those little pieces of progress with what we have.
Great, okay.
Any other questions of Rusty? Is, I think we need a motion to pass this-
Motion to approve.
Second, the agreement? Any other? Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. Item tens, the Central City Revitalization and Housing Committee Report, Request to Terminate Memorandum of Understanding with ALS Development of North Carolina LLC, Continued from the September seventeenth City Council Meeting, Presentation, Councilman Todd Piersaw.
Chairman, thank you, Mayor.
Exhibit ten-one, not exit, exhibit.
Correct. You'll find this in your agenda on exhibit ten-one. This is a continuation from our September seventeenth meeting. It was item number two on the Central City Revitalization and Housing Committee Report. There again, on exhibit ten-one, you can see the notes from that meeting. But we, the committee voted three to zero to recommend terminating an existing MOU. The city legal staff had indicated that this could be done by simply giving a thirty-day notice to terminate to ALS Development. But then, once the committee did vote to terminate that MOU, we received an email from Mr. Jerry Meeks, and he represents ALS Development, asking that we continue this, because he could not be at our September seventeenth meeting. So, that is why it's on the agenda tonight, it has been continued. And in regards to that MOU, we have Mr. Joe Grant, who is here, who requested the termination of the MOU. And then we also have Mr. Jerry Meeks, who is here representing the ALS Development. So, if we can hear from those gentlemen, Mr. Grant, if you would like to speak first? And we can make a decision based on what we hear today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. When I came to the committee a couple of weeks ago, I expressed my disappointment in having to come and ask you to undo something that I seldom have to do. I represent clients before a wide variety of, that have a wide variety of interests. And I operate on their word. I also expect, when I deal with people, to ask them to operate on mine. Now, the reality is that we were misled by ALS to believe that they had control of the property when they requested that we secure an MOU for them. We spent a considerable amount of time and political capital working that. And this council and the committee were kind enough to do it expeditiously for us. We subsequently found out that ALS does not, to this date, have control of the property, and they have continued to misrepresent that fact. Now, in good faith, I believe that we should withdraw that MOU. Because frankly, I don't think you can trust a developer who misrepresents the facts to you like that. I made that case to the committee, and I would like to make it to council. I think that in good faith, you are in a position where you really can't operate on any word from that developer. And professionally, I can't let that continue, because I secured it on their word and you voted on mine. So, out of respect for that, I respectfully request that the council terminate the MOU effective with thirty days' notice. And I'd appreciate you giving that your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Grant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we also have Mr. Jerry Meeks, who represents ALS Development.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. First of all, I have a four-day-old son at home, so I have circles under my eyes.
Let me interrupt you and just say that my notes said that you were being, someone representing you is Ryan Francis Meek.
Ryan Francis Meek, born on the night.
Do they teach that in law school, diapers? Okay, go ahead.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here today, and thank you also for rescheduling this so that I could be here. I represent ALS Development of North Carolina, which is an affiliate of the EdgeCon Group. And those of you who may not be familiar with the EdgeCon Group, it is a very prominent, large developer and construction company in Ontario, Canada. To give you a sense of their scope, the EdgeCon Group owns, operates, and/or has built in Ontario seventeen multi-unit residential buildings, thirteen hotels, three hundred and fifty retirement home units, two thousand units of affordable housing, and they've also developed approximately five hundred lots. The president of ALS, which is the actual North Toronto company involved in this project, is Enzo Mizzi, who has spent over twenty-five years in developing multifamily residential projects and in general contracting. And his specialty has been in the development of affordable housing and assisted living projects in Toronto. He has developed more than four thousand residential units with a value of more than six hundred million dollars. And he's also developed three hundred thousand square feet of commercial and industrial space with a value of over a hundred million dollars. Affiliates of ALS today own and manage close to six hundred units in the Charlotte metropolitan area, and they have an additional two hundred and seventy units planned or under construction. How did we get here today? In March, my client, ALS, hired Quinton Ellie, a consulting company for which Mr. Grant works, to provide development consulting services in connection with Beaver Brook Apartments project. Under that contract, Quinton Ellie was to be paid compensation for their services totaling almost a million dollars, specifically nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. And the consulting fees were to be paid to Mr. Grant's company as certain milestones were reached. In July, a dispute arose between ALS and my, and Mr. Grant's company over whether a certain milestone triggered an additional payment. On seven eighteen, July eighteenth, the president of Quinton Ellie sent an email to my client threatening that they would tell the city we were dishonest if my client didn't pay them the amount that we disputed. On July nineteenth, the president of Quinton Ellie informed the owners of the Beaver Brook property that Quinton Ellie would be suing my clients and that they would be asserting a lien against the property. On July twenty-first, the vice president of Quinton Ellie threatened to contact the city manager in an email to my client and quote, "withdraw the MOU." This is Quinton Ellie saying to my client, "We're going to withdraw the MOU," quote unquote, "if you do not wire us the disputed funds by four thirty PM that day." And they even indicated in the email that somebody was gonna be meeting with the city manager that day, and he would be waiting a call on whether or not the funds had come in before he said that my clients were dishonest. On eight thirteen, this is three weeks later, Joe Grant sends a letter to my clients saying that they'd be happy to continue representing my clients if my clients would pay him the money that was in dispute. Well, needless to say, my client did not pay the money that was in dispute. As a result, Mr. Grant and Quinton Ellie carried through on their threat. They came to the Central City Revitalization Committee, said that my client had misled them, said that they were dishonest, when in fact, we have emails going back all the way to March thirteenth, where it was very clear that my client told Quinton Ellie what the status of the property was. They told Quinton Ellie that there were issues over control of the property that they were trying to resolve. At any rate, my client was not represented at the committee meeting. The committee, my review of the audio indicates that they were about to vote against terminating the MOU. And then Mr. Grant got up a second time and made a second plea as to how dishonest my client was, not revealing in fact that this whole dispute emerged over a financial dispute between my client and Quinton Ellie. So, where are we now with respect to the project? My client has spent over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on this project. Since January of this year, as you may know, the note is being held on this property, is being held by CIBC, the Canadian Imperial Bank of Commerce. My client has been negotiating with CIBC going all the way back to January. They in fact are making the payments on this note. They in fact are making the payments on this note. They have made over $125,000 worth of payments on this note going all the way back to the beginning of the year. It's hardly somebody that's not concerned about the property or interested in exercising control over it. In fact, my client has even offered to buy the note from CIBC for $2 million once they have had sufficient time to get a tax credit for this property and once they have entered into a binding MOU with the city. In fact, this summer, when the city found violations had occurred at the property, it was my client that paid to fix up those problems. They boarded up the property, and they paid $5,000 to do that. There is currently a purchase contract between ALS and the owners of the Beaverbrook Apartments, pursuant to which my clients will purchase the property. And again, they're also negotiating with CIBC over the note, to purchase the note, contingent upon certain events, in particular, their ability to get tax credits. Since my client's relationship was terminated with Quinton Ellie, they have gone and found a new company to provide them with services that Quinton Ellie had previously provided, and they've also selected a new tax credit property manager to assist them in this process. They are very much committed to this, as is evident from the fact that they have put more resources into this than anybody else has, and literally hundreds of thousands of dollars. And they are committed to moving forward and renovating and expanding the Beaverbrook Apartment complex per the understanding that you had of the memorandum of understanding. In conclusion, it should be noted, the memorandum of understanding was signed between the city and my client on June 18th. It said in there that the memorandum of understanding would be in effect for two years. Four months has elapsed. Hardly, there's not much time that this MOU has been in place. Second, the MOU says that it can be terminated by either party at any time. So if there ever a point where the city decided, you know, there's another potential suitor for this property, there's another direction that we think we could go in, you could terminate it, and you could go to the new potential developer to try to get this project launched. But in fact, unfortunately, and having said that, there's no harm in keeping the MOU in place if you can terminate it automatically, and I think the committee recognized that. But again, changed its mind once Mr. Grant gave a second appeal. But the effect of terminating this, if you think about how much my client has put into this development, you think about the fact that they have offered to buy a loan for $2 million, that they have a purchase contract in place with the owner of the development. The effect of terminating the MOU would substantially undercut those efforts, would substantially undercut their ability to purchase the note from CIBC or to move forward with the project, and there really would be no tremendous or any upside for the city as far as I can see, other than vindicating Mr. Grant's sense that he should have been paid on a bill that we contend is very much in dispute. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Any questions of Attorney Meeks from the council?
I think my questions are more towards our legal counsel.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I make one more comment?
Come to the podium, please.
Thank you, sir. I simply need to address this contract. You know, in my discussion with council and with the committee, I've never raised a contract dispute, I don't believe, in any formal way with ALS, because frankly, I didn't think that was a variable in this discussion. We have a contract with them, there is a dispute. But to suggest that this is about a contract dispute that we will handle through arbitration is misrepresenting the facts. I don't know whether Mr. George Caloris is here or not. We talked to Mr. Caloris, who is the owner of the property, yesterday. He reiterated that there is no purchase agreement with ALS. Now, you know, frankly, this is the guy who owns the property. Mr. Meek has one impression of that. We talked to the owner yesterday, who has another. The fact is that we do not believe that the property is owned by ALS with the purchase agreement in place, and if there is, let them come back and secure an MOU. But we do not believe that is the case now, and we had that conversation with Mr. Caloris, and I regret that you have been brought into what is a contract dispute that will be settled by other meetings.
Let me ask you, Mr. Meek, just out of curiosity, you said, I'm sort of picking up on the end of this. I'm not on the committee, but I haven't liked it since day one, and I made it clear I haven't liked it since day one and really didn't understand it. I don't have a law degree, but I've been doing this 43 years.
Neither do I. I don't have a law degree.
Well, the question just jumps out at me. You just said that you knew that they didn't have a contract now, but why didn't you know it then?
Because we took their word for it.
Just word only. You've never seen a contract.
You know, I'm used to, I mean, clients take my word. You all took my word. I mean, I operate on my word. I've been a lobbyist for 35 years, and my word is my bond. I don't misrepresent the facts, and if I don't know something, I tell my client or the legislator I'm dealing with, I don't know. I'll get back to you. We operated with these guys. They came in, told us that they owned the property. We only discovered after the fact that they did not own the property. And, you know, in retrospect, I guess I'll have to have everybody provide proof, but we had no reason to believe that they were misrepresenting the facts to us, as we subsequently found out that they were.
Well, just from my information, you used the word that you've been a lobbyist for 35 years. So you're a registered lobbyist?
In South Carolina, yes.
You're registered with the state of South Carolina as a lobbyist?
Lobbyist.
Okay, sir. Questions? Go ahead. Chairman, you want to talk?
What? Thank you, Mr. Grant. This is for our legal counsel. Explain, Councilwoman Craig and Councilwoman Kimball are on the committee with me, so we've kind of heard a lot of this going on, but maybe if you could just highlight, from the city's standpoint, the pros and cons of canceling the MOU or not canceling the MOU?
The MOU is basically an agreement to cooperate in attempting to develop property.
Turn your mic off.
I just need to get closer.
Is it on?
Yeah. The, it's an agreement to cooperate in the development of the property, and really, it's more of an agreement to agree. It's an agreement to try to work out an agreement to attempt to develop the property. So it really hasn't, it's not really a binding agreement to do any particular thing, except work together. And even that, it's not completely binding, because it can be terminated on 30 days' notice. So from the standpoint of the city, I don't know that there is a particular, just from the agreement itself, an advantage one way or the other, other than the fact that if it does assist in getting the property developed, if it will help an entity get the property developed, I think that would be the major advantage for the city in that I think all of us would like to see Beaverbrook developed.
Yes, Mr. Gallagher.
The MOU is between the city of Gastonia and ALS.
Yes.
And that's what this gentleman over here who had the four-day debate.
Correct.
Mr. Meeks representing. It has nothing to do with the other gentleman, Joe Grant?
It technically has, Mr. Grant is not, as I understand it, a member or a principal in ALS, so it would not have anything to do with Mr. Grant, other than at one point, he was retained to negotiate the agreement. That is his relationship with the agreement.
However, the MOU is between us and ALS.
Correct.
And it's up to us to determine whether we're going to
Completely.
keep it as is or
Right.
diminish the thing for ALS.
Terminate it.
Now, terminating it from ALS, and the reason being, why would we do that?
The committee originally voted to terminate it because Mr. Grant had requested it. We, there was no, at the committee meeting that, when we were discussing this, ALS had no representation there, and we were not even aware that ALS wanted to keep the MOU in place. For since then, Mr. Meek contacted us, and then we postponed it so we could hear Mr. Meek and Mr. Grant. And I think Melissa probably described it best, is Mr. Grant was representing ALS in the initial discussions to get the MOU written, and because he felt like the facts had been misrepresented, he wanted us to go ahead and terminate the MOU. But as you can see, ALS is here tonight to ask us to keep the MOU in place. So it's really just up to the council whether you want to keep it in place or not.
That's Craig.
This, if I remember correctly, because I am on the committee, is this MOU was aggressively put together on the recommendation of Mr. Grant.
Right.
And it was modeled after some other MOUs that he had had with some other municipalities. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So basically, and this might be for legal, too, is the MOU that we currently have was basically a MOU that Mr. Grant sent to us and re-revised, and we added to or took out what we felt like we needed to have for the city.
Right. It was, yes, it was actively negotiated.
Right, okay. That's the legal terms. Okay. So my question in bringing that to forefront, if, does AL, what is it?
ALS.
Yeah. ALS, is this an MOU that was put together the way the city and Mr. Grant negotiated it? Is it a MOU that ALS can live with currently, okay? Or do we need to modify the MOU and revise it as a certain date? Okay? You see, what I'm saying is that we've got one, yes, but it was initiated and it was modeled after what Mr. Grant sent us, so.
My question is, ALS signed this document?
Yeah, and we have not received, as far as I know, we have not, and obviously, Mr. Meeks can, Mr. Meeks can address this, we have not received a request from ALS to modify the agreement.
So it's in force?
Yes.
And in reality, Mr. Grant represented ALS to us?
Right.
And actuality, they have a dispute amongst themselves. Our agreement is with ALS. As far as legally.
We have never had an agreement with Mr. Grant or Mr. Grant's company. The agreement has always been with ALS.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
To further clarify what Councilwoman Craig mentioned, when we negotiated this MOU, in a close reading of the MOU, you see, all it does is it says that we will work cooperatively with the developer, and we will work cooperatively with really any developer. There's really no requirement of the city here at all. It is a very loose agreement that just shows that we support the redevelopment of Beaverbrook, really. I think that was the essence of what the committee had. Some of the recent conversations I've had, even with the owner, current owner of the property, they asked me, they said, "Well, if we come in with another developer, would the city work with them?" I said, "Sure, we will work with whatever development group that is focused on improving the housing quality in Beaverbrook." So whether you have the MOU or don't have the MOU, we're, you know, and we will do that with properties throughout the city. So it's here as a statement that I think that this developer can use, perhaps, to, you know, to their advantage, and that's okay, because we support trying to make that housing better, because if you go out to Beaverbrook, you look at that housing, you know, really something has to be done. So whether it's with ALS, or ABC, or CBS, doesn't matter which development group it is, we will work with them. And, you know, seriously, we will really work with them, because for us, the city, and because remember, on either side of this project is public housing.
Right.
And the public housing folks have moved forward, and they're looking at renovating their buildings. So this all works, kind of works together. So I don't know if that helps the council in terms of its discussion going forward on this particular item, but we, you know, that's the background.
Could I make a motion that we keep the MOU in place?
Sure, you're right.
Make a motion?
To keep the MOU as is and.
Okay, is, in other words, leave everything just like it is, is the, that is the, that's a request, well, that was a request. Okay, this would have to be, Melissa, I guess it is just a.
I mean, technically, the agreement is the agreement, so if you did nothing,
If you did nothing.
the agreement stays in place. So, I mean, no action leaves the agreement in place.
You want to make a motion that.
Or you can choose to reaffirm it if you would rather have something on the record that you reaffirmed the agreement, either way.
So, just one quick question, Mayor, if I could. So your recommendation in regards to Councilman Gallagher's motion would be, that his motion is that the council not take the recommendation of the committee and leave the MOU in place?
That would probably be the.
Or reaffirm it?
Yeah, or reaffirm, either way. I guess since the committee recommendation was to terminate it, then perhaps the best thing would be to not take, to word it as to not take the committee's recommendation. Which would leave it in place.
Question from Mr. Meeks. ALS has signed this MOU.
Yes, ma'am.
And it was signed months ago, right?
Four months ago.
Four months ago, right. Are they still comfortable with everything that's in this MOU?
I have not been asked, and I'm not under any understanding that they have any problem with the MOU. In fact, they think it's important and helpful to them in trying to get the kind of cooperation they need from CIBC and from others to move this project forward. So I think they're entirely content with the language, the MOU, and we're actively involved in negotiating, of course, even though they're representing a certain property.
One other question. Do you have any kind of a timeframe as to when you think ALS will have ownership for this property?
I don't, you know, the purchase contract, and I didn't bring a copy, I got it on my cellphone. Show it up to you, but the purchase contract is contingent upon them being able to get tax credits, and the next deadline for tax credit applications is January now. So I don't know how that fits into the longer timeframe, but that's, that at least gives you a short window.
Well, the only reason I ask that is because we've gone through these tax credits with Loray and some of these others. Evidently, that's a drawn-out process through HUD, okay? So we could be talking about a next application in January. Then we could be talking about another application following January. But I mean, and I'm not opposed to that, but I just, I know that tax credits can become very, very complicated and very lengthy in a time. And if the public housing is looking at doing something around that Beaver Creek, okay? And then we've got Beaver Creek in here, in the middle of it, that really needs to be taken care of.
You know, I wish I had a better explanation of that process. I don't. It hasn't been kind of focused for me so far. I'm happy to gather whatever information I can from my client about what their anticipated timeline is and get in touch with your council or with Mr. Mine and give you whatever information I can gather.
I mean, and that's really not relevant to the MPO. It's just something that I think that as we look at a timeline again of when something might be completed out there or even started out there, then maybe we put some kind of a revised MO, you know, some kind of statement on the MOU. I don't know. Just throwing things out on the table.
Is the MOU good for two years?
It's good for two years, but it's terminable at will, basically. You can end it at any time on 30 days' notice.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Now, my understanding is the MOU will stay in place if we take no action.
Correct.
There was no need for a motion. If we decide, unless we terminate.
Well, we have to, against the 3-0 vote from the committee?
Right, it's a motion not to accept the committee's recommendation.
Which is basically the same thing, I guess.
Same thing, if we just take no action.
I second that motion.
What's a motion?
To not take the recommendation of the committee, to leave the MOU in place at this. point in time.
There is a motion and a second. Any question? Any discussion?
No, I, I would just say that in the beginning, when, when Mr. Grant approached us with this, and certainly Mr. Grant has offered his apologies to the committee and for the, to the council for any misrepresentation he gave, and we certainly accept that apology, Mr. Grant. But despite the intentions of what this was, it has spurred redevelopment plans or remodeling plans with the Housing Authority on two different locations that sorely needed it. The discussions on Beaver Brook itself are still being, are still taking place, so in the end, whatever the intentions were, there's some good coming out of this. I certainly appreciate Mr. Meeks and Mr. Grant being here and we certainly respect and accept your apology, Mr. Grant, for this, but even though the committee did recommend three oh, I would too be in favor of leaving the MOU in place for now.
Any other discussion? We've heard the motion is a second, all in favor? It's unanimous.
I would like to ask Mr. Meeks to please get us that information.
I absolutely would.
And if you get that to the city manager or to the legal department. Thank you.
Okay.
That's all of my report, Mayor.
That's pretty short tonight. Okay, that's item ten. Item eleven, by the way, officially, we're glad to have you with us, Melissa. I, I didn't say that in the beginning and I meant to. You got a report?
No, I have no report.
Well, that's what she's so like, Ash. The city manager's report.
We'll, we'll be sending you some information about that potential meeting, special meeting that has to do with reviewing our flood ordinance. We've got dates in October that are available, it's like the seventeenth and the twentieth and the twenty-second. We'll send an email out to all of you and let you look at it through Regina and then we'll see if we can find a date that's convenient with everybody. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. City council report, Ms. Craig?
The only thing that I would like to remind everybody is October is Breast Cancer Month and certainly keep all the survivors in your prayers and also the people that are going through treatment, keep them in your prayers and that's my report.
That's my report.
That's good.
Just to follow up on what Councilwoman Craig said, you can also, again this year, get your T-shirt through the fire department.
Are they still doing it? You got a sample out there?
They're, it's a little bit brighter pink and the text is in gray this year, so you can actually read it better instead of white. So my own mother, being a breast cancer survivor of two years now, I will be purchasing two of those, one for her and one for myself, so very, very important that we remember that.
Two things, Mr. Mayor. One is this Saturday from eleven to two at the Shield is Energy Day for the energy people. They're gonna be having guys climbing poles and doing all kinds of things with energy and you could see it out there, demonstrations. It's great for kids, they have a lot of things for them, activities also. And also, this Saturday is Habitat for Humanity is having a fundraiser at the Conference Center. So just want to encourage everyone to attend, to help them out for all the good that they do. And that is it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, sir. Thank you. A week from today, ten AM, it's dedication, the ribbon cutting over at the Highland, over where you were born, Brandon. The hospital, the Highland Memorial Apartments and, at, at ten AM and then I think a tour after that. And that is on the eighth of October, get to it, which is, yeah, it's a week from today. Just don't forget the Veterans Day Parade, November the eleventh, but you, y'all have all this, it's just that I, I've forgotten what day that was, this on a Monday, Veterans Day. And I think that's everything that we, we have, anything that we've got?
There is one thing.
Yes, sir.
The city manager has a funny cup.
A funny cu, oh, yeah, well...
That's, beat'em Bucks, it's been twenty-one years since the Pirates have been in the postseason. They play a one game tonight against the Reds and if we beat them, then we're in the series.
So you're gonna hoist up the Jolly Rogers out in front of your house?
We have it in the kitchen right now.
Now, let me see if I, I've got this exactly right. The Panthers beat the Steelers, so you don't talk about the Steelers, you start talking about the Pirates.
I'm now back into baseball.
I got you. What's, what's gonna be?
Steelers are oh and four, so I moved to baseball.
What's gonna be after the Pirates, soccer or what?
You always have to have a plan.
Volleyball?
You always have to have a plan B in life, you know?
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It's still daylight.
Yes.
We read it just for you. We, we, we discussed that. We discussed that. Because you wouldn't have even heard it, it was in the content of it, you wouldn't have even heard it.
Joe, yeah, I appreciate you saying that, you know, it's between you and him.
Yeah, well, I'm just being, just here. It's, it's... Lisa? Yeah. Lisa, Lisa, I'm gonna tell, I'm gonna tell one of your friends about you. They'll be looking for you now.
Jim will probably get on camera for you right now, but, um, it's...
Here, sweetheart. And I think they're all signed. I think they're all signed. And you know what? It's, I want you to look this, seven eighteen. Told you. Two years now. You gotta go to John.